Hey Pam. I'm gonna go off of the video until we're up for planning and for zoning appeals.
Sure, yep.
Just wanted to let you.
Okay.
One second.
I'm checking if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yep, thank you. We're good Phil.
Okay, have we heard from the Mylett?
We have not.
Okay. Alrighty, good evening everyone. This is the Town of Winchester zoning board of appeals regular meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, convening at 7:00 PM, being held on the Zoom platform. For the record, myself, Philip Allen Chair, Vice Chair, John Mazikot, Secretary, John Pollack, seated members Hal Wilks and Aubrey English are all present, so we have a full quorum. For those of you who may not be aware, we will be calling each application as it appears on the agenda. The applicant has the, will present their proposal, their request, then there'll be an opportunity for for the board to ask questions. There will be an opportunity for the public to make any comments if there is any public to do so. At the close of public comments, the applicant has the last word, we close the formal hearing, there's a discussion among the board members if any, and then we read, we make the motion, we discuss it, and, and we vote. A vote has to be a minimum of four, four votes in favor of the motion to pass. So, as opposed to a simple majority. And and that's, and that's really basically our procedure. I don't think I've forgotten anything. Okay, our first, our first hearing on the agenda is ZBA 20-5247 for a variance application for 131 West Wakefield Boulevard. However, the applicants do not seem to be in attendance. Is it appropriate to open this and continue or?
You can open it and, you know, I don't think there's any members of the public, but you can see if there's anyone here because you had opened this already. This has been a
Right, this is a continued hearing. So, we reopen the hearing on ZBA 20-5247 on West 131 West Wakefield Boulevard concerning the installation of a fence in the Highland Lake District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this open here? Hearing no comment, then I would, it would be appropriate to have a motion to continue this application? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to zoning board of appeals, application 20-5251 of variance 338 East Wakefield Boulevard with Andrew Champagne and Lynn Carter. And whoever would like to speak first?
Hi everyone, I'm Andrew Champagne. Lynn Carter is also on this evening and looks like Hollywood square number seven. I, I think you said 338 East Wakefield Boulevard?
Did I misread? Oh, 342.
342, correct, okay.
I'm sorry.
We're here to kindly request a variance for a small garden shed on our property at 342 East Wakefield Boulevard. Just to give you a little background, we were granted a variance last year to build a permanent residence at the lake. We started the project in February, we did the demolition of the old structure and did some blasting for some ledge that was there, but pretty much after that kind of COVID took over and unfortunately, we're both in an industry that was really hard hit by COVID. So, we, we thought it was prudent for us to kind of put that on hold for a couple of months just to see how everything played out. In the interim, during that time that we had off, we've been off basically since, since early March and we're probably going to be off through the end of the year. But in that time, we've really done a lot of landscaping on the property. We've done the, a big buffer garden down by the water that was requested of, by the wetlands committee. We planted a lot of nice trees down there and really kind of stabilized the property. Lynn planted wildflowers on the entire property and really just to try and stabilize it while we were not doing the construction. Lynn is a, an avid gardener and during this time, she has asked me several times if I can build her a garden shed. So, I looked at the zoning regulations regarding accessory structures. I spoke to Pam at length about it. We hired John DeCara to put together a site plan for it. And we found that we can meet most of the zoning regulations regarding accessory structures except for the requirement that says you have to put it in the backyard. We simply have no room for it in the backyard and even if we did, it would really adversely affect the view of our neighbors to the north and as well as the neighbors to the south. I have a couple of pictures that I've included in all of your packets. I don't know if those are accessible. But there's one picture in particular that I'll start out with and it has the lake in the background. Wow. That's pretty great technology. The only thing we've used Zoom for so far is virtual cocktail hours. So, you could see in this picture, that's the view actually taken from the neighbor's property to the north. They have a really nice view across our backyard. You can see where we've done all the plantings and so you can really see that there's, on the left side, you can see two rows of hedges. Those hedges are seven and a half, eight feet tall and they go all the way up to the street from there. And the variance that we were granted in 2019, we're going to be actually the back of the house, we're going to be building in the existing footprint of what was there. And that existing footprint comes to about even with the end of those bushes that's right there, those hedges. So, you can see once there's a building there, there would be no room for a, an accessory structure. And you can also see really what that would do to our neighbor's view if we put up a building right there. And you can see everything that we've planted down by the water. With that being said, we do have a perfect place in the front yard, which is considerably larger than the backyard. It would be a location tucked away in the front corner of the property and it would not be seen from the road at all because there is a row of hedges across the front of the property right there. You can see those spruce hedges are about 20 to 25 feet high. The picture that I'd like to show now is the one of the car. Yeah, I'm sorry that it's sideways, but that, that's Lynn's, well. It's settled down there. That's probably good enough. There we go. That's Lynn's car sitting in the spot that we would really like to build the shed. That car is sitting, the front of that car is sitting five and a half feet from the property line where the shed, the back of the shed would be. And just for reference of size, that car is actually 15 feet, six inches long. So, the shed would actually be six inches shorter in length than that car that's there. So, if you go back to the pictures that are taken from the road, there was an angle taken from the north and the south. You can see that you just can't see that location on our property from the road or from our neighbor's yards as well. And we do understand that probably most of the other accessory sheds that you see around the lake that are in the front yard were probably grandfathered in under some other zoning regulations. The one difference with this one is that you just will not see the shed at all. It will not affect anyone's view of the houses across the street or the two adjoining properties. As far as construction of the shed, it's something that I would do myself as well as build the house. I'm going, not going to be a shed that you would just get at, you know, at Lowe's and have it dropped off. It would be something that I would build in conjunction with the house. It would, it would have the same facade as the house and really kind of fit on the property, give it a little bit of character and kind of fit in that little spot. And then of course Lynn would come in afterwards and really do a lot of nice landscaping to it. One other point about that location, if you look on the site plan, you can see that John DeCara has delineated the, there's a line on there that shows that this is well outside of the 100-foot wetlands regulated area. You can see it right there on the, on that site plan. So, as far as coverage is concerned, it would only increase the coverage by about 160 square feet. The shed would be 10 foot, eight inches by 15 feet. Of course, it would be less than 10 feet tall according to the regulations. That's an increase of about 1.8% over what we were granted in 2019. It is less than the allowable 200 square feet for accessory structures in the regulations. And one other point is that it is also less than the total coverage that the previous owners had on their variance that they were granted in 2016. We actually reduced our coverage considerably when we got our variance. We changed the plan around to have a house that was more a typical lake style house as opposed to what they had designed. So, that's about it for coverage. So, in essence, we just simply have no room to put it in the backyard based on the position of the existing footing and footprint. And there's a little bit of a steep topography on the north side of the property near the lake. That also has been created, we've really created a very large buffer garden that again, we're using to stabilize the property and kind of make sure that we don't have any runoff in that area. And we kind of feel that the strict intent of this accessory structure regulation would create a burden for both neighbors on the north and the south because it would severely impact their view. And while we absolutely understand the intent of the regulation and agree that in 99% of the time or cases, that it would be reasonable to expect that a shed is built in the backyard. And I think most properties would, would probably be set up that way. But we feel that due to the unique characteristics of the lake and specifically a narrower piece of property, it might not make sense to require that an accessory structure be put in the backyard when there is a much better place to put it in the front yard where it really would be out of everyone's view and not affect anyone's view or enjoyment of the lake. So, that's, that's about it. I think we've covered pretty much everything.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something.
Yes, please.
Do not say sheds have to be in the backyard. What they're saying is that they have to be, if they want to be within the side yard and the rear yard setbacks, then they have to be behind the front structure. But if they want to be closer than the setbacks that are required, the 35 feet, that's when they have to be behind, behind the front, the main house. Now, you can put a shed, as long as you meet the requirements, you can put a shed in garage in front of the house without, as long as you meet the setback requirements.
And the setback requirements are the Highland Lake District?
Correct. Or wherever you put in the shed, whatever property you are, but yours is Highland Lake, so yes.
And that's what explained to me why we needed to get the variance in the first place.
Correct, but it's not because you're putting it in front of the house. It's because you can't meet the setback requirements of Highland Lake District.
Okay, I got you.
That's what it is.
Gotcha.
Does any member, any members of the board have any questions for the applicants? I have, I have one. I assume that everyone, all your neighbors were properly noticed and all of the cards got turned in and all that. So, everyone who could, wanted to write a letter or whatever had opportunity to do so.
Yeah, and there were actually, I know of two emails that were sent to Pam.
I have one. I got one.
Cussin's, Richard and Nancy Cussin said that they had sent you one as well. We told them yesterday they did anyway.
I'm gonna turn my screen.
But there are, there is definitely one that I know of that Pam had enclosed on the website. From the immediate next door neighbors to the north, that was an approval.
Okay, we can take that when we get to public comment, which is shortly actually, but any other questions from, from our board? Hearing none, we will move to public comment and take the Cussin email. Should we read that into the record?
I'm gonna give that to you, that one.
Okay, this is an email dated Monday, August 17th from Sue Cussin to the members of the Winchester zoning board of appeals. This letter is from Charles and Susan Cussin of budding property owners to 338 East Wakefield Boulevard with regard to the request for a garden shed located at 342 East Wakefield Boulevard. We respectfully approve of the requested location of the garden shed in front of, in the front yard for the following reasons. At the requested location, it would not interfere with the view of the lake of any of the immediate abutting properties. Due to existing vegetation, the shed would not even be visible from the road and properties across the street. We have a shed on our property at 338 East Wakefield Boulevard that provides for storage of garden equipment, planting supplies and all types of items necessary for the maintenance of the property. And also the design of our shed, which was grandfathered in the front yard, has received more compliments on its appearing, appearance, excuse me, than any other building on our property. We are well aware of Jay's and Lynn's abilities and desire to maintain their property in a very attractive fashion and are confident that the shed will be built in an attractive manner which will preserve the character of the lake and neighborhood. The shed will provide them a very useful space to house equipment that may otherwise have to remain in, in, out, in the yard as a visible distrac- attraction to the property. Due to the unique character of the properties that are immediately on the lakefront, it is always nice to see some sort of attractive vegetation around such structures to enhance the physical, visual characteristics of the property. And that is certainly one aspect that will make this garden shed fit perfectly in this location on the property. Thank you very much for your consideration, Charles and Sue Cussin, 338 East Wakefield Boulevard, Winston, Connecticut.
I don't have any other emails, Jay. I looked through, I'm sorry.
We're not hearing you, Mr. Champagne.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had sent them the email address that they asked for, but maybe they just but they were in approval of it as well. I know that's, doesn't hold any weight without the actual letter, but that's okay.
Okay. Is there any other, well, no, there's nobody else here from the public to invite to comment. You have the last words.
I got one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Mark, can you tell me the variance that was included in the package that was approved in 2019, the lot coverage? It says it went from 17.1 to 14.8?
Because the variance amount was 17.1, now it's 14.8. So, it was 14.8, it was that 29, 29.8.
Okay, that's what I thought.
For another 2%, 2, 2.7%.
If I might, the previous owners were granted 32.1% and we went down to 20, 29.3%. So, this would actually go up to 31.6, which is still about a half a percent less than what the previous owners were granted, I guess.
That's all, Phil.
Okay. Well, there is no further questions or comments. You have the last words, Ms. Carter, Mr. Champagne?
Really, the only way you will be able to see this shed is to actually come onto our property. And again, it will not be able to be seen from the road, so it really won't affect anyone from the road. We would certainly be grateful for your approval of this small garden shed. Not only in terms of it being able to provide a very useful place for us to store Lynn's garden equipment and tools. We also have a little tractor that we use for snow removal in the wintertime and but also that kind of one of the added benefits is it would give us a place to store some tools and some materials when we're doing the building. Safe place to do that. I'm sure you're all aware of all the break-ins of the cars. Summer, we've had two cars broken in. Our two cars were broken into, our neighbors were both broken into and you know, at least one car was stolen around the lake, but it was, so it would give us a nice safe place to do that to store some equipment while we are building the house, but most of all, it would provide Lynn with just years of enjoyment and carrying out, in a place to carry out her hobby and her passion, which is gardening. And she would be able to do that in a way that's not harming anyone or not affecting anyone.
Thank you. All right then. Picking up my, so with that, we will close the public hearing on ZBA 20-5248. The motion is on the screen, a motion to approve a variance application number 205251 to modify the lot coverage of variance number 195216 from 14.8% to 16.69% for a total lot coverage of 31.6% and for variances from section 2.g.b.i.i. for a front yard setback variance of 44.5 feet, a north yard setback variance of 29.5 feet for the purposes of building a 15 by 10, 15 foot by 10 foot, eight inch shed as per the drawings submitted for the property located at 242 East Wakefield Boulevard. So, having stated the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion.
Hey Phil, just to let you know that there was a typo in that, it's 16.6, not 16.69.
Ah, okay. I didn't print out the amended, the amended agenda.
I just noticed it.
Okay. Do we need to read it? Okay. Spare everybody reading the thing again.
The total lot coverage is still the same, 13.6. It's just that amount.
Right.
You said 242 East Wakefield. I'm sure you meant 342 East Wakefield.
Did I? Oh dear, I'm sorry. Oh, well, the old dog is old. So, any discussion of the motion?
Well, the only thing that bothers me is the lot coverage. I mean, it's, you know, more than double what it should be. It's you know, it's disturbing to me to have that much coverage, especially on a lot that's right on the water, you know?
We already approved that, however.
Yeah, alright.
I mean, in, in the original variance, we approved something very close to that, I think. Is that correct?
You're adding to it though. You're adding two more percent to it.
Two more, two more percent?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my, it's minute. I mean, I'd love to see him have the shed and everything. But it is, it's troubling to me to see that much lot coverage, but.
Phil?
Yes.
That was the thing that was also bothering me is, is the amount of lot coverage. What I would probably be a little bit concerned about would be possibly after the house got built and we had an idea of how it came out, maybe then we could come back and request a shed and because it is, it is over, I guess it's over 30%, 31% or something in that neighborhood. So, that concerns me a little bit. It is a very small lot.
I mean, maybe we could, you know, make the parking area pervious, which would surely help the situation.
I don't have the original plans that would inform what the intention was on that and we can't open up that question at this point. Unless Mark, you can inform us?
No, you can't. You couldn't ask the applicant if he could, he would do that.
Well, you have the site plan in front of you. Mark, you can't ask the applicant now, but you can look at the site plan. If anyone doesn't have the site plan there and you need me to pull it up, I can pull it up.
But does it specify, but it does, does this, this particular site plan show pervious coverage and pervious treatment?
Let me, you want me to?
Pardon me?
No, not for the driveway, because in the bottom of the site plan, it says coverage includes a house deck, shed and drive.
Do you, I'm sorry Pam, do you have the, I don't have a site plan for this property that shows the, shows coverages as such?
You see it on your screen?
I'm seeing the motion right now.
Alright, hold on one second. Is that better?
Okay, so that's, that, oh. Okay, my, the site plan I have doesn't show that. I'm sorry.
You're good?
Yeah, thank you. Would we be within, within our purview to make a conditional approval if that drive is in fact permeable? Or that doesn't cha, that doesn't change, okay? Okay, well, I any other, any other suggestions or insight from the board?
I just, I had a thought that the shed could be made maybe a little bit smaller, stay within, we're talking about a small, you know, minute fractions here of things, but it's just the amount of coverage is disturbing and now we're adding to it. You know, you say it's already been approved or had been approved in the past, is that during winter?
The, the 29, 29.6% coverage was approved under the old, the previous variances attached to the property. I'm sorry, we can't take any testimony from you at this time.
Okay, in other words, Hal, what was approved is to build a house with that much lot coverage.
Say that again?
What was approved prior was What was approved prior was to build, to demolish and rebuild the house, and that's how much coverage the house would take. So that was, was approved prior. Now he's adding the extra for the shed. So the commission approved fourteen percent up to twenty nine percent. Lock coverage to be able to rebuild that house that he had there.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if it's only a small, minute amount, I mean, these guys have done their homework. Brought all their information and we're having no other, you know. Neighbors aren't raising any objection to it. I don't see any other objections. I don't see what the. I mean, I don't live on the lake, but I really don't see what the issue is.
One of the, one of the things that I would be worrying about is, is the hedges or the trees that he has in front. What happens if, for some reason, there's a disease or the trees are later cut down by a new owner or something like that? And then they become visible, visible to the eye and that causes a problem around the lake.
Well, I think, I think it probably would eventually because I, I. That type of tree, when I, I observe it, I believe it, it's self pruning from the bottom, I think. And it's a, you know, it's a type of tree that grows to enormous heights. And I think, you know, eventually they, you know, have to come down, but you could just, you know, you can plant other ones there to take, take its place.
It looks to me like they're doing a pretty good job of, you know, keeping up their, doing their landscaping pretty good, too. I think if that was an issue that they would. I mean, I can't speak for them, but it sounds to me like they, they took care of. That's all.
Well, yeah, the landscaping is great. I think that whole area has been done. Uh, approved or. You know, just a lot better than it ever was, let's put it that way.
Yep. I mean, I mean, you may be talking about, you know, future owners here, but here they are owners now. You know, they're talking about them using the property now, so. That's only where my, that's where my, that's where my thinking is at.
Okay.
My last concern, like I mentioned before, is I would possibly. Approve it after the house got built to see how that came out and possibly if they still need it, then that's something to consider, but. I'm against the excess lock coverage at this time end. And I'm a little bit wary about the trees and I'll take a sense of good precedent at the time.
Well, thank you. Uh, I think we should call the question.
Pass it.
It's all right, that. Anyway, call the question, do we need a restatement of the motion? No. So, all in favor of approving the. Motion for ZBA two zero dash five two four eight, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Abs. And no abstentions. I'm afraid that your, your motion does not carry. Uh, it is three to two. Thank, thank you for replying and we may talk to you again.
All right, can I make a couple of comments now that the hearing is over?
Uh, no.
Because there were so many questions that came up that.
I, I know, but we can't, that.
I could have answered all of John Pollack's questions.
I, I understand, but the way that, the way that the hearings have to proceed, once the hearing is closed, no further testimony can be taken. Uh, if, you know, we just can't do it. I'm sorry.
Better luck next time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Okay. Moving on to zoning board of appeals, application two zero dash five two four nine, a special exception. Oh, I'm reading the wrong, the wrong agenda. I'm sorry. Zoning Board of Appeals two zero dash five two five two, variance location at fifteen Hinsdale Avenue, the applicant Winchester Public Schools. Uh, for a monument sign that requests a variance for height and area. Uh, so Ms. Brady Shandling, Mr. Jorgensen, whoever is going to lead, please take the floor.
Can I hand this one off?
Thank you, Mel.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Melanie. Good evening, everyone. Paul Jorgensen with Silver Petroselli Architects in Hampden, Connecticut. I am the architect or one of the architects working on the Hinsdale School renovation project. Um, which is before planning and zoning inland wetlands and now before you. For this specific monument sign on Hinsdale Avenue. I can share with you my screen, Pam, if that's.
Yep, I've, I've prompted you.
Okay, great. I hope I can do this because I'm on a different computer than the other night, but I will try.
If you need me to pull anything up, you let me know.
Thanks. All right, I think I can do this. Okay. So. I don't know if you, if that's clear, the screen. This was one of the, the images that was submitted to the commission. And this is specifically the monument sign that is on Hinsdale Avenue. So you can see in the top of the, of this sketch, this is the elevation. Uh, that faces the Gilbert Brook. And to give you a little bit of background, we are taking, if you haven't heard the full extent of the project. We are proposing to remove the oldest part of the building, the nineteen fifty section, which is situated directly over the brook. And this will prevent, assist us in keeping the site from flooding in the future. Right now, the site floods and it can back up with a hundred year flood elevation into the building. Um, with the removal of the oldest portion of the building and the uncovering of the Gilbert Brook. We're allowing, in the flood, the hundred year flood event, we're allowing it to spill over the headway and down. Uh, off, off site, which will prevent the building in the future from flooding. Um, so we're rebuilding the end of the nineteen eighty nine building, which we're keeping. With this metal panel and you can see the color, we have a blue wave of metal panel, which is really reminiscent of. The flowing of the brook and water movement on the site. And then as the sign for the corner of the property now, the new corner of the building, we are proposing the. The sign that we are requesting the variance for. Um, I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit if I can. That's not it. So. What you see there. Is the sign itself, and I'll try to get this out of the way. There we go. Um, so our sign is approximately nineteen feet tall, which is well above the, the ordinance or the regulation. Um, and it's really in keeping with the end wall of the building. So it's just a little bit, it's two feet taller than the end wall panel of the building. And then the overall. Uh, sign area is. And I'm reading it right from here. The sign area is a hundred and eleven square feet per side. And the overall text area is ten point eight square feet, which is the vertical signage, Mary Hinsdale. The, the text height is fourteen foot, five inches and the width is nine inches for the, the letters that are stacked. Um, as you can see, the signage does include, it's, it's separate from the building. Um, it's separated by a gap, so it's, it's not part of the building itself. It stands just in front of the building and right next to the site stairs that are existing there off of Hinsdale Avenue right now. The, the signage includes the, these three small bells, which are reminiscent of a schoolhouse bell, obviously. And they will be real bells on that signage. Um, the, the sign is constructed out of a metal panel and a heavy, very heavy gauge aluminum panel. That is the same material as the elevation directly adjacent to it. Um, in that light gray or medium gray color. There, there will be no. Uh, illumination of the sign. There's no sight lighting of the sign or us lighting that is directed up on the sign. I think unless Mel, you have anything to add, I think I've covered the material of it. The intent of it is to, is to make, is to, you know, give the. Uh, the school a new image coming up Hinsdale Avenue as we're, again, removing the old section of the building. So really, we have a new identity for this corner of the property. Um, I'll open it up to any questions.
But with the sign that I'm looking at. I'm just a little bit concerned about vandalism. What if some of the kids are, somebody climbs up there and hangs on or swings on one of those bells and falls off and gets injured?
I'm hopeful that that will not happen, but you know, I think anytime we're building something new in town. You know, sometimes. We'll make choices, but you know, I'd hate to see the corner of this particular building not highlighted. Delighted in this capacity. This is our highest traffic point. Um, and probably the biggest advantage point of the building. So we really paid close attention to making sure that it is aesthetically pleasing and really, you know, fits in nicely to that neighborhood. So I'm not too concerned about, you know, the vandalism and what have you. What I'm more concerned about is actually the aesthetics and making sure. That it fits the scale of the building and then also highlights the neighborhood on that corner.
Well, my concern would be. Do those bells ring?
Uh, well, they, they're regular bells, so they, they could technically ring. They, um, there's no intention to use them. But they are bells that, that, that could be connected and run.
No. I, I, I can't believe that there isn't a student there that would get up there and ring those bells.
I agree with you, Hal, and then.
If I was there, if I was there, I'd be ringing that bell.
Or throwing something at it.
Um, I mean, I don't see any problem with the sign itself, except for somebody. You know, I, I mean, I could just hear those bells ringing at eleven o'clock at night or something.
Aubrey?
Yeah, I was just curious as to how far, how far from the newly constructed steps would the sign be placed actually? Is it, is it like, is it how many feet, how many inches would be against the, the steps itself or what?
It, it is not right up against the steps. It's actually set back from the steps. I can try to find out the exact dimension. Um, but there's a railing between the steps and the sign. Um, and so it is set back a, a small distance from the, from the steps going up.
Now, the, all right, I'm sorry, I mean to interrupt. Are, are the bells? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Aubrey.
I was just also curious, you may, you may have, you may have answered this question already. Um, but how, how thick itself would the sign be? You say it's out of a metal material, but how thick, how thick would that, would that, that material be?
Um, the, the metal panel that we're using on the building, and this is standard for this elevation and a few other locations. Is, is an eighth of an inch thick, so it's point one two five inches thick of aluminum. Um, it's a standard building panel that we've, that my office has used on several schools. Um, it's not uncommon. We use it in aluminum is the choice of a lot of districts. Um, it's a painted product that has a Kynar finish, which has a, I believe it's a twenty year warranty on the paint finish alone. Um, and we don't, we haven't seen a lot of damage in terms of denting and other things because it is such a heavy gauge panel.
No, that, that's kind of where my only question be is if we had like a. You know, God forbid a hurricane or trap or storm force winds coming up there, how well that would probably, you know, withstand that if we were having a. If God forbid that fall upon a student or staff member.
It's, it's being mounted on concrete, right? Or would the, is the metal just extended out? Kind of free hanging, as it were?
Uh, this would be on a steel frame, so there would be a steel frame that would be embedded into the concrete below, into a concrete base. And then the steel framework of the sign, then the panel siding would be attached to the steel framework.
Is it? Uh, how, how thick would it be at that point? I mean, is it? The steel framework is on the building itself and then this sits right into it?
No, 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 this is.
Or it's freestanding?
Freestanding from the building, so it would be, have its own found, uh, concrete foundation. Um, that's set down to frost depth. And then just like a signpost for roadway or a light would be mounted that way.
Well, the only objection I have is that I don't think the bells should be ringable. Period. Come on, you were a kid yourself, you'd be up there ringing those bells.
I'd be tempted.
Yes, you would. I, I am.
Or is?
Oh, just remember that, that the commission has nothing to say about what the content, it's just a matter of having the sign. Um, because we can't by law regulate what the content or what's part of the sign itself, just whether or not. They're going to allow that size sign, basically.
My, I know what you're saying.
That sign's gonna have to be engineered, done by an engineer, licensed engineer to sit, to make sure that it's gonna stand up and withhold anything that. So Mother Nature hopefully throws at it.
The, the structure that holds the bells is not the structure that holds the sign. Is that correct?
It will be one in the same.
Okay, so the structure that holds the bells is concrete?
Uh, no, it's a steel frame.
That's also a steel frame. Again, I just got faked out by the impression of depth in the, in the drawing.
The bells are considered part of the signage.
Okay.
It is. It's one, one piece and it's two.
Okay, okay.
That's why the variance is so much is because they have the bells and everything. That's why the sign is so big.
All right.
As far as students hanging on a school, on those bells there, that's what you have a school board and an administration for.
I have one more question. Sure. What happens when somebody climbs on top of the sign over here and they're like eighteen feet up in the air? Is there going to be anything on top of the sign to keep people off? Or is it just gonna be a level and they could just climb up there and sit on the side?
John, that would be no different than somebody climbing up the side of the building and getting that roof.
Yes, I mean, you'd be surprised how kids are today. I, I would be surprised. So, so as that sign gets up, you have two or three people just standing up there. And, uh, and then the school will have a, some kind of a lawsuit on their hands because they didn't protect. They didn't protect the property accordingly or something like that, and then the town will be underhooked for it. So I don't think it's a good design to decide to be honest with you.
No, forget that. The commission has nothing to do with the design of it, just ties it and everything else, so.
Well, I'm not gonna vote for something that I think could be possibly dangerous.
Everything is possibly dangerous, John.
Thank you.
That's correct. But I'm sure when you went to school, I'll tell you, when I went to high school, there are places, everybody used to do some strange things and I could just see this is something that's just waiting. Uh, to be approached.
I. Um, any more questions of?
Yeah, just, just one of a. Yeah, just, just one of a, of a cosmetic question about the sign itself. Uh, what, what color would the, I mean, just curious, what color the, uh, the, the sign would be itself there? Like, would it be like a dark color or any particular color is going to match what some of the rest of the building would be?
A great question. Um, the, um, the letters on the sign are individual letters that match, or at least we're showing them right now to match the color, the blue color of the panel on the building. And the sign itself, we have a two-tone, uh, gray scheme right now. There's a medium gray and a light gray on the sign and the light gray goes with the, uh, the blue letters.
That whole color scheme kind of flows throughout both the inside and X two, all playscape also.
What's the distance?
That's outside.
I'm sorry. What's the distance?
Hal, go ahead, please.
What's, what's happening? All right. What's the distance from the bottom of the sign to that, uh, base of the first bell?
Um, that is approximately, oh, I'm sorry, base of the sign is, uh, ground level is, um, it appears to be about just under four feet. We're looking at about three foot, ten to four, uh, forty six to forty eight inches, probably.
To the first bell, from the, from the bottom to that?
Uh, well, that's not, that's not to the bell. I'm sorry. That's to the cutout for the bell. The bell is a little higher than that, so it's probably, uh, somewhere four and a half, uh, just shy of five feet.
So it's, it's, uh, it's, it's reachable by anyone?
It would be difficult to reach it, but yes, someone could reach up and probably.
Right.
There's a possibility to touch it.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
Um, just, just because the, you know, so the commission understands that i- if the variance wasn't granted, but the school board committee still wanted, you know, to keep the bells, you're, you're talking, uh, you know, the, they would need to, um, um, make the, the width of that sign slimmer. And they would still have the bells and the board, that, you know, they wouldn't need a variance, right?
As long as they kept it under seventy two square feet and under the height, that's a lot.
So, so it's a height variance that they're seeking?
In other words, if they wanted to, if they didn't have the word Hinsdale on it, that wouldn't be considered a sign. It could be part of the building.
Yeah, it's the words that trip it, trip it over into.
The word that triggers the sign in China.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and the square footage of the word Hinsdale, is that what you're counting as the sign or are you counting that entire structure?
There in cat, the whole structure, because it's part of the monument sign, because of this thing is considered a sign. But if they didn't have the words Hinsdale on it, it wouldn't be considered a monument sign. It would just be something sticking up out of the ground.
Or if they shortened it.
They'd have to go to, to be able to come in as a sign, they'd have to shorten it and reduce the size of it to seventy two square feet.
Cause I just want the board to know that if they were to deny the variance, it doesn't mean the bells are going away. Those naughty boys.
They could, they could always, all, they could always disconnect the word Hinsdale from the, the, the bells and put it lower as a separate monument sign. So.
I understand.
Uh, show of hands, who wants to talk? I saw, I saw Hal wants to say something. Did, did John, did you, John Mazikot, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
Uh, Aubrey, were you raising something?
I'm all set. I'm done.
Okay, John Pollack?
No, I, I don't have anything else to just say. I just take, it's, it's not a design that I like. And I think, um, we should put it on hold for now.
Uh, and Hal, you were?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Um, there, is there anyone from, well, I don't think there's anyone from the public who is here to weigh in on this. Um, again, I'm assuming that all the proper notifications have been done. Um, and we've had no, uh, email correspondence on the application?
No.
Okay. Um, so, uh, no public comment. That means that the last words of the hearing are to the applicants. If you'd like to say anything to wrap up?
Sure, I'll, sure. You know, I just appreciate your consideration. I think, you know, this project's come a long way and we're moving in the right direction on this project. And I do feel like on that end of town, it's really to add a feature to that end of town. And aesthetically, I want to make sure that, um, you know, the community benefits from it. Certainly, you know, the homeowners in that area are going to benefit from a solid looking school building that'll be attractive to the community. So thank you for your consideration prior to your vote.
Thank you.
And, and I'd like to add the same. Thank you for your consideration and, um, the design. Uh, while, um, we understand that there's concern about, uh, specifically the bells more than the side, than the actual letters in the sign, um, we'll certainly take it under consideration um, and have further discussions as we complete the design, because it is still in, um, construction documents at this phase. Um, and, uh, we just ask you, ask for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And so that will close our, the public hearing for ZBA application two zero dash five two five two for one fifteen Hinsdale Avenue. And we have the motion, uh, the motion to approve variance application two zero dash five two five two for a variance from section three dot G dot three for a monument sign height variance of twelve point nine feet and sign area variance of fifty four square feet for the purposes of erecting a twenty two foot, nine inch tall monument sign with total square sign area of one hundred thirteen square feet per side, as per the drawing submitted for the property located at fifteen Hinsdale Avenue. Motion read and stated, seconded by Mr. Mazikot. Uh, any discussion, further discussion from the board?
It's a hundred and fifty four square feet, not fifty four.
Did I, did I not say a hundred?
No, no.
No.
Sorry.
Oh, Phil, what are we going to do with you?
I understand.
Uh, well, you know, call the vet and get the pink juice. Made by night, made melody laugh.
There was a law and order on the other day about that, Phil.
All right. So, uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion from the board?
I was just going to say, I will just say this quickly here. I mean, very briefly here, within like a couple of blocks down from the school, passing by there every day. Personally, I think that would, you know, that sign would be a great, you know, you know, enlightening benefit to the neighborhood. Make it, make it look a little better than it is now. You know, I understand the concern about the bells and all, but I'm looking at the total cosmetics here. I'm talking about this is a, a project that this town can be proud of, our students can be proud of. And I think having a sign like that would be very beneficial. That's why I'm saying I'm going to vote for it. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll call the question in support of the motion signified by raising hand, saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Wilks and Mr. Pollack, no abstentions. I'm afraid that your application does not succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, business of which we show none on the agenda. Uh, the next point of order is the approval of minutes for July twenty eight, twenty twenty. Are there any corrections of fact in the minutes that anyone noticed? Uh, no, no comments being heard. We will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any correspondence? And any other business? Uh, anything to discuss with Mr. Malanson? And hearing none, we can hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All seconded, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Nobody has ever yet voted against adjourned.
Hey, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Hi.